Good morning. Today is February 4th, 2025, Lee County Board of County Commissioners meeting will convene. We're going to have the invocation from Pastor Nick Yachtwin. I said that wrong, I apologize Pastor. Stand please, thank you.
Thank you. You gotta participate by after all, right? Good? Close, yeah.
Good morning. Please bow your heads as I pray. Father, we thank you for the privilege of this gathering. Thank you for the men and the women who have gone before us with the vision of making this county and its respective communities a place that so many are able to call home. Thank you for these men, Commissioners Ruane, Pendergrass, Malika, Hammond, Greenwell, and their teams that have willingly taken the mantle in serving this county and its great citizens. Please grant them vision as they work to further strengthen our communities. Father, we invite you into this room today to lead and guide, to impart wisdom to navigate the items at hand, bring your spirit of unity to those issues that may bring tension and differing points of view, and help us all to be quick to listen and slow to speak. When we do speak, may our words be rooted in truth, seasoned with grace, and offered with love. Open eyes to see the threats to the well-being of our people and to act with resolve to meet the true needs of those that look to these officials to better our community. Grant a heart of wisdom and humility in stewarding the resources given and established, the fiscal, the natural, and the human, and offer perseverance in doing what is good and right even when it's hard. I ask your grace upon this day, your hope to fill the lives of those that are here, and may your will be done here in Lee County as it is in heaven. Pray all this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor. My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again Pastor. Now we'll move on to ceremonial presentations. The first one will be Pet of the Month, Commissioner Pendergrass.
Thank you Chairman Fockgood. Have our staff come forward. Mickey, come on down with the puppy. I see you got the puppy already. Mickey, bring her down. She looks so happy with you. She's actually not a puppy, so this is Tinker Bell.
She does, she matches Ben's tie, so we think it's a perfect match.
This is Tinker Bell. She's actually over a year old. She's full grown and she is a bulldog and a chihuahua mix, right?
Boston, Boston.
Boxer, yeah.
Boston terrier?
Boston chihuahua.
Oh, Boston chihuahua.
Boston chihuahua.
What would like a Boston wallow?
She's full grown, so she comes ready.
So if you want to tell us about any programs going on, we have a lot of people here today, so hopefully Tinker Bell will find a new home today. And hopefully some of the advocates we always hear about that is not happy with our services will actually see what great services we have and maybe take Tinker Bell home today instead of taking a, spend the day here complaining, so.
We have, this month is a Dr. Yappy Valentine, so all adult dogs are just $14 with an approved application. So come on down and, you know, adopt your own date for Valentine's Day. She's already dressed, so that's perfect. And we are also having the Bissell Foundation with Fix the Future coming out three days in February, that those dates are posted. You can email for an appointment and it's a $25 spay or neuter for owned cats with the Bissell Foundation. And we hope during those three days we do over 100.
Great, I feel like Bob Parker and Mickey's here, the price is right. And Mickey's gonna show off the dog.
Amen!
Mickey, you're doing a great job showing the dog up. We should do this more often and, you know, maybe if they're smaller, you could carry them then, but. Well, thank you, and I know hopefully Valentine's Day, people will go down to our services and adopt and find a pet for their home and for their families, and thank you again. And I don't know, maybe Mickey's bringing that one home with her, so I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you Pablo, you and all your staff. Thank you Chairman.
You're quite welcome. The next item is National Wear Red Day. People from Lee Health, if you'd come on up, I have the proclamation, I'd be happy to read. Anyone here, part of the group, feel free to come on up. So what we're gonna do is obviously I will read the proclamation. Will come on up for a photo. Let me do that, and then one person or two that would like to speak, feel free to go to the podium, okay? Thanks for being here today. The proclamation reads is, whereas cardiovascular disease continues to be the leading cause of death in the U.S., and whereas cardiovascular disease affects men, women, and children at every age and every race in the United States, cardiovascular diseases are the number one killer in women in the United States, killing more than all forms of cancer combined, and cardio disease is the leading cause of maternal death in the United States. Whereas women, especially black and Hispanic, are disproportionately impacted by heart disease and stroke, and research shows heart attacks are on the rise in younger women. And whereas a woman is less likely to receive CPR than a bystander than a man, and men have a 23% higher odds of surviving a sudden cardiac arrest than women. Whereas the American Heart Association goes red for women, movement motivates women to learn their family history and to meet with a healthcare provider to determine their risk for cardiovascular diseases and stroke. And whereas the American Heart Association and the Florida Department of Health in Lee County encourages every citizen to beat for someone you love by becoming a lifesaver, learning the skill of hands-on CPR. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida does recognize the importance of this ongoing fight against heart disease strokes and proclaimed Friday, February 7th, 2025, National Wear Red Day in Lee County, and it urges all citizens to show their support for the fight against heart disease on this day in wearing the color of red by increasing awareness, speaking out about heart disease, empowering women to reduce their risk for cardiovascular diseases, and learning life skills on hands-on CPR so we can save thousands of lives a year. Duly executed by the fourth, my signature is Chairman Kevin Ruane. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you for, thank you, thank you for your advocacy. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, yeah, thank you guys for everything.
Hey, we'll do a couple photos. Three, two, one, and start it. Three, two, one.
Thank you very much. My pleasure. Would anyone like to speak or say a few words? No, okay, thank you. You have three minutes. The next item on the agenda will be the Length of Service Awards. Obviously we'll have Human Resources come up and obviously the department heads and the county commissioners, if we can go down to the floor and obviously praise all the people that work here.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Angela Pruitt from Human Resources, and I'm going to be accompanied by Victoria Abis and our county manager Dave Harner. We're here this morning for one of my favorite things, that's the Length of Service Awards to all of our eligible employees for the fourth quarter of 2024. These awards represent collectively 1,055 years of service to Lee County Government. Woo! For those employees that are present, as I call out your name, please step forward to receive your coin from the county manager and greet the Commissioners and senior team. And then please remain off to the side in order to take a group photo at the end of the entire presentation. I'm gonna start with five years of service, and so I ask everyone with five years of service, please stand and be ready to come up when your name is called. First up, Gary Decker. Next up, Elizabeth Garcia.
Thank you very much.
She has a fan club.
Ray Isley. Jason Mallett. Brian Roberts. Ellie Rogers. Diana Schnabel. Alan Schneider. Kevin Smart. Talley Trendcamp. Caesar Valencia. Kevin Van Kovierling. And finishing up five years of service group, Noemi Vega. Let's have a round of applause for our five years of service. Next up, 10 years of service, please be ready when your name is called, Tom Ashelman. Joel Bennett. Liz Correa. Tad Delmay. Carrie Jenkins. CJ Jordan. Justin Lighthall. Sean Maddox. Thomas Monroe. Antonio Rodriguez. Ray Rodriguez. And a final round of applause for 10 years of service. Representing 15 years of service, first up, Cody Dodd. Leah Garuti. Hector Ibarra Juarez. Michelle Rogers. And finishing up 15 years of service, Steve Thomas. A big round of applause, 15 years of service. Representing 20 years of service, first up, Nora Donato Hitchcock. Tim Lamontaine. Michael Reinick. Michelle Rios. Joanne Rodriguez. Abigail Soto. Tracy Turner. And last in the 20-year group, David Wagley. Representing 25 years of service, Anne Merricks. And Mike Rosario. Let's have a round of applause for 25 years of service. And a big round of applause for our only 30 years of service today, Laurel Chick. And we have three people celebrating 35 years of service. First up, Rick Burris. Robert Clement. Susan Dratlev. Let's have one big round of applause. All right, we're gonna take our photo, so she's up there. Come on in everybody, we're gonna have a nice group photo. Come on in, the Commissioners are gonna be behind you.
Thank you all. The next item is the recap. We certainly have some items on the recap, but there's nothing to address right now, so I'll move forward with the consent agenda, go across the dais and have any Commissioners pull anything. Commissioner Hammond.
I have nothing today.
Commissioner Pendergrass.
None.
Commissioner Malika.
None.
None.
I have none either.
I'll move the balance, Mr. Chairman. I'll say.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Hammond, second by Commissioner Greenwell. I do have a couple of cards for public presentations, for public comment. Joe Willie Shakama. You also have a consent agenda, so you have a check there, so come on up sir.
I'd like to state that I've, from prior meeting, that I did talk to Diane about designing something outward in the Suncoast area. I meant like I left her message before I came here and Charlie, prior to that, just in case my health, that we had the advocacy law firm on McGregor. If I died right now or leaving here, then it would go to the Suncoast Community Centers thing, so it's getting the seed money to develop and after that, the rental comes in to aid the community center. And all I'm asking is a little trust from my child and it down goes and never be sold, meaning that from here on in, that place is gonna be helping people generation after generation, 20 years from now, 40 years from now, 60 years from now, if we set it up right. The way nobody can say, it's going in my pocket or anybody else's pocket. We rotate the money to the different places that do help people. Now I did the same spiel to our mayor, that we have a building that could be, or two buildings that could be utilized in the city. You got the old fire sta, I mean the old bus station that could be utilized for an outreach. Open up that restaurant and bring in revenue, okay? But also use it as putting up picnic tables. Our police officer with the hot team was all for that. He, matter of fact, that was his idea, putting picnic tables, so they're not in the park, you know, feeding. First United Community Kitchen. The Heritage Park Hospital kind of place by the hospital, it's vacant, I noticed vacant, then I noticed somebody was in it, and I noticed it vacant, grass growing and all that. I remember taking people amputees that went out to drink and the wheelchairs in the middle of the sidewalk some years ago, taking them over there, rolling them over there so they didn't get hit by cars, okay? That could be utilized in the city as a kind of a youth hostel setting shelter, but not a shelter that, you know, isn't free. It'd be like a youth hostel, money coming in goes into a fund to do the things in our community on a rotating basis. People being fed, people being clothed, education on a rotating basis, so it's not one organization that'll be getting just all the money. So that's my spiel and I hope that we can all work together, city and county, churches. A friend of mine just told me, he said, well the churches were the first social services. I said, yes they were. They need to take a step up and be advocating for the needs of the people too, and some of them do, so with that, Mr. Hammond, I'll be talking to you, text you what Diane gets back to me and Christina Jackson is the lady builder, she says she met you a few times. So she's been, had some health issues, so once, everybody's working, another friend of mine is on Sanibel doing construction, you know, building up, so that's, thank you.
I have a lot of cards, but I didn't see any else marked for consent agenda. Anyone like to speak on the consent agenda, didn't fill a card out, or I didn't see that you checked the box? Anybody? Come on up sir.
Hi, I was here. Hi, I was here, my name is Russ Arrington, I was here a couple of weeks ago, asked you guys about the 10 Mile Canal thing, so I'll be brief. I know it's kind of old hat, but there are thousands of people that live off Island Park Road. Can I continue or am I in the wrong thing for this?
Yeah, we're talking about consent only, we'll be able to bring you back up, but just consent, this item is on the consent, so I can call you back during public presentation.
Okay, cool, sorry, my apologies.
No, no problem.
Go ahead.
It's new to you, no problem. Anybody have any item that they want to speak on the consent agenda? If not, I'm gonna close public comment, bring you back up to the Commission. I'm gonna close public comment. I have a motion on the floor and a second, any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. And I'll go with the administrative agenda, county manager, you'll introduce the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this item is to authorize land development code amendments, and I'd like to ask Ms. Mickey Resultto present the item.
Good morning Commissioners. We are here to request that you direct staff to draft amendments to the parking requirements for the Boca Grande and Matlachay Historic Districts. This would allow use of a parking reduction similar to what is used in mixed-use overlay to allow for redevelopment and repair of properties in the Matlachay and Boca Grande Historic Districts. If we are directed, we will bring the amendments forward through the advisory committees for review and recommendation before they are back in front of the board for your consideration and approval. If you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Any questions for Mickey? Glad you will start, if I may, I'm very happy to see these changes come through both communities. I certainly are within my district and certainly think it's a necessity to try to have some overlay adjustments here, so I'm gonna move this item.
Say again.
My Commissioner Hammond, I think he was a little faster, sorry. Commissioner Greenwell. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the Commission, any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next item, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is the
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to approve expenditures for disaster debris cleanup and monitoring for Hurricanes Helene and Milton, and I'd like to ask Ms. Christine Brady to present the item.
Good morning, commissioners. As the county manager mentioned, this is to approve expenditures for disaster debris cleanup and monitoring for Hurricanes Helene and Milton. We are seeking approval for Crowder Gulf in the total amount of $13,939,407.58 for Thompson Consulting Services, which provides monitoring services in the amount of $2,441,863.25 and for Waste Pro for disaster debris cleanup in our Area 4 in a total amount of $181,322.10. All of these represent a little over than $16 million. And again, this is for expenses incurred to date.
Any questions for Ms. Brady? Seeing none, I gladly move the items that we've incurred. Appreciate you bringing us the documentation and furthermore refining the agenda item administrative. Thank you. My motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Rain, second by Commissioner Greenwell. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back up to the commission. Any discussion?
I don't think we should have any more hurricanes.
Seeing no discussion, anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the approved amendment to Daniels Parkway Controlled Access Management. I'd like to ask Mr. Rob Price to present the item. I apologize.
Great Rob shape.
Good morning, commissioners. Not Rob Price. Jillian Sholder with DOT.
Lost more weight? No more beard?
Yeah, we like you better.
This item is a modification to the Daniels Parkway Controlled Access Resolution to add a new right-only access point on southbound Daniels Parkway, approximately 800 feet south of the State Road 82 intersection. The new access point was requested by the Gateway Marketplace Development. The access point meets all connection separation requirements. The developer will be constructing a right-turn lane into the access point. Based on the analysis, this new access point will not present a threat to public safety, health, or welfare. The request does require approval by a supermajority vote. Staff has recommended approval, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Move the item?
Second.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner Penegras, the second by Commissioner Hammond. Any public comment? Now, seeing public comment, I'll move that. I'll bring it back up to the commission. Any discussion? No discussion? Anyone opposed? No opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, if I may, county manager, I'm going to turn over to Commissioner Penegras. He is a unique guest that would like to come up and speak about this. Commissioner?
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman. If I could, we are honored this morning, obviously, to have the Florida Surgeon General here this morning. He's actually doing a conference right now, a call outside, so I'm not sure of his timing, when he can be up for this item. But Dr. The doctor is here in the house, so we could start this item, I guess. We'll start to take a public comment, and he'll be—he wants to make remarks to the board, and he came here to, in support of the board's actions, after I brought this forward a few months ago, and we brought it down. So we could either go to the next item, or we could start and hope we can make it down. I'm not sure if we know a time when he's going to be in the room. He was here earlier, but he had to go outside for a call.
Yeah, I'd love to just move on to the next item.
We'll come back and pull this.
If the commission's fine, I'd like to do that. I think it's really important to listen to someone of his significance to do his presentation.
Right.
I'm honored that he had the opportunity to come down here. So let's move on to the next item. County manager.
Commissioner, I believe that is the public hearing.
Go to public hearing. Thanks, Amanda.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Amanda Swindle with the county attorney's office. I have your public hearing today, and it has been legally advertised. This public hearing is to adopt a resolution to approve changes to the Lee County Utilities' miscellaneous fee and capacity fee schedule. These fees have not been changed since 2011, and I believe we have Pam Keys from LCU if you have any questions about this item.
Thank you very much. Any questions, commissioners? I'd like to move—
Move the item? I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Commissioner Penegras was the motion, and Commissioner Hammond was the second. I'll go to public comment. Any public comment?
Bob Valenta. My comment would be that if we're about to take up the issue of getting rid of fluoride, which is going to change the cost of our water utilities, wouldn't it be better to postpone this table list to a future meeting?
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, commissioners. Pam Keys with Lee County Utilities. These fees are capacity fees, development fees. They do not cover any operational fees. Fluoride is covered by our operations monthly billing.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other public comments undecided? I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back up to the commission. I have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I guess we could start. He should be down in a few minutes. We could start, and we could have more discussion. Any other public comment? Then once he comes in the room, we can obviously recognize his attendance and have him speak on the matter then.
Chris, I'll have you kicked off. Obviously, you were instrumental in putting this forward for us. I appreciate your explanation, and obviously, I'll give you the floor.
It's been a debate in the past, obviously, the fluoride in our water and your public utilities, and it's always been pros and cons. It's just more recently, you've seen other cities and counties throughout the state has took action to remove it. You know, it's just, you know, when you look at the different studies and the long-term effects, and we, we as a society, we always try to do the right thing for health and try to make everything better for residents. But when you look at, you can break it down to, like, if you look at public consumption, if you look at a household, 1,000 gallons actually going through the meter at the street to the house, how much of that 1,000 gallons of water is actually impacting a human being in the house? Well, the reality is, in most houses, and probably my home, is probably one gallon of that water, I'm presuming. The other 9,000, 909 gallons are being used for dishwashing, washing cars, utilities, not being used, it's going directly into sewer. We don't know the long-term effects of that. And then, you know, a lot of people now are drinking bottled water. People are getting bottled water treated in their house. And so are we really giving that fluoride actually getting where you—the initial, when this first started years ago, decades ago, was to get the fluoride in our system as a society so we have better hygiene, better teeth. Over time, we have changed, our society has changed. So now we're seeing the long-term effects of this, and that's something I think the doctor of Florida Surgeon General is going to speak about today. We'll probably hear the public comment, too, pros and cons of this. I just think that if people choose to do that, they can get it separately. You know, if you take your kids to the dentist, you can pay extra, get the fluoride, use on their teeth. People buy fluoride now, who pays for whatever items they can. So you can take the supplement that way, instead of putting in all the, all the water that's being used, consumed outside, or no resource of what it's for. So that's why I brought it forward, is we have to have this discussion. Staff provided great information why other cities and counties have removed it. It's just not as a cost-saving. It's also, instead of us, as government, putting something else in the water for us to be long-term effects about. So if staff wants to address that, or Pam or anybody, if staff wants to address the item before us today, I'd like to hear from them, too.
Come on, please, Pam. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate the explanation.
Well, thank you for that introduction. Lee County Utilities has been using fluoride in our drinking water since 1979, when we received board approval for a grant application for the equipment. Since that time, we have dosed the lowest recommended amount. This is not a regulated compound. It is a—we receive a recommendation of the lowest amount, and that's what we've been using. At one time, it was strongly recommended by EPA and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. But recently, the Surgeon General has publicly announced his opposition to its use. I can't really speak on the pros and cons of the public health issues, but as far as Lee County Utilities, what concerns us is, number one, it's not regulated, and number two, there is an operational cost annually for this compound. We're also very concerned. It's a very caustic and corrosive material. Our staff needs special training for protecting their health. We've always had concern to ensure that we provide our staff with training and the proper equipment. So again, I won't speak to public health, but as far as the utility, it is a mandated cost of doing business.
One thing I do want to point out, other counties, you know, south of us, Cary County, Naples, Stewart, Florida, Winter Haven, Lyth Park, Sebring, it goes down the list here, have all, have already had, went, based on helping them tuck away the fluoride out of the water. 39 counties now in the state of Florida before today is fluoride-free. So it's just the ongoing effort throughout the state of Florida, what you're seeing, and across the nation, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll go to public comments. First one is Robert Valenta. The green light is where you start. The yellow is, you have a minute left. Red will be your time to wrap up.
What an incredible time we find ourselves living in right now. The deep state is being uprooted across the globe. Corruption is being revealed on all levels of government, and now the house of cards of neurotoxins being added to our potable water is collapsing. Exciting times indeed, making America healthy again. Many speakers are here to speak today and on so many different aspects of this issue, and I know these five commissioners are committed to hearing them. I want to thank each of you for being open to this great moment in Lee County history, especially Cecil Penegras, who helped us to get it on the agenda. I won't get into the weeds on each of these topics, but some speakers will be talking about health concerns. There are so many new studies exposing the harm caused by fluoridation, way too many to go into in three minutes. But if you watched the YouTube video we emailed you of Dr. Joseph Ladapo and Dr. Maylin speaking at the Taveri City Council meeting, you get the idea. These studies show that fluoride causes a five-point IQ drop in children. Fluoride, it's a no-brainer. Consent. Fluoridating everyone's water is prescribing a medical treatment without obtaining informed consent or proper medical diagnosis of each patient. Health malpractice, as Dr. Ladapo has called it in an official statement as Florida Surgeon General. In fact, the county utility department is not licensed to practice medicine, nor should they be. So fluoridation could be considered practicing medicine without a license. A felony in Florida, no-brainer. Economic considerations: the cost of adding fluoride to our water, potential future health issues and treatments, potential liability claims or lawsuits, another no-brainer. Environmental impact: the process of fluoridating water isn't just about adding fluoride. It's about managing waste from industries like fertilizer production and aluminum manufacturing, where fluoride is often a byproduct. Instead of safely disposing of this waste, it's sometimes added to our water supply. This practice not only raises ethical questions, but also environmental ones, as we're essentially using our water system as a dumping ground for industrial waste. Alternatives: toothpaste, mouthwash, fluoride treatments from your dentist are all readily available. False claims: you may hear from dentists today speaking on both sides of this issue. Those opposed to ending the fluoridation will claim many things. One thing you will likely hear today is that fluoridating water is the most cost-effective way to treat the underprivileged. The truth is that there are already many programs for the financially disadvantaged to obtain dental treatment, so as they say, that dog won't hunt. So I urge you to consider the ethical, health, environmental, and economic implications of fluoridating our water. Let's move towards a policy that respects individual choice, protects public health more comprehensively, and is environmentally and economically sound. Let's get rid of fluoridated water. It's a no-brainer.
Thank you. Jay Colenhagen. Hope I said that correctly. I apologize if I did not.
Stakeholder Jay Colenhagen, 34112. Boy, Facebook had a post out yesterday, man, over 800 comments, and most of the people want to remove a fluoride. It's kind of crazy. If you're one of the few people who still hang their head in the three-letter agencies who support fluoridation in water, well, let me tell you. You know, American Dental Association, back in the 40s, a long time ago, about the time when doctors used to prescribe cigarettes to asthma patients, and the ADA was against fluoridation in the water. They thought it was harmful back then, but it fell on deaf ears. Now, now the ADA is pro-fluoride. So I ask, the ADA now is claiming fluoride is all-natural, and we know it's all chemical and very misleading. It's toxic, corrosive, contains levels of lead and arsenic, and that's what they're injecting into the water for everyone. So keep in mind, the ADA doesn't speak for all dentists. Many are leaving the association because they just don't agree with the ADA's stance on fluoridation. Let's go to the AAP, the American Academy of Pediatrics, who also supports the fluoride in the water. They think giving an experimental COVID-19 shot to six-month-old babies is a good idea. Let's move on to the WHO and the CDC. You know, they were wrong on a number of counts during the COVID pandemic. You know, a lot of distrust in these, in these three-letter agencies here. Their approval ratings are just going down, going down. So considering DeSantis, Ladapo, President Trump, and RFK Jr., they're against fluoridation in the water. If you feel that they keep the fluoridation, you might find yourself voted out in the next election. Naples and Cuyahoga County have removed the fluoride from their, their water. It's time for Lee County to do the same. Wrap it up here. Thank, thank all your commissioners for bringing this up, especially Cecil Penegras, who made the motion to add, add it to the agenda. Thank you.
Nick, let's refrain. Obviously, everybody has a pro and a con, so I'm going to just ask everybody to have their opportunity. Carabash?
Hello. Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Cecil, for helping us get this on the agenda. I support the effort to get rid of fluoride. I did not know how corrosive it was until coming to this meeting, and imagine what that's doing inside our bodies if it's corrosive to the equipment that's providing us our water to our houses. 39 counties have already removed fluoride, which is awesome. I'm really excited that Lee County is considering this, since I live here in North Fort Myers. And I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak on it. And again, I support the effort to remove the fluoride from our water. Thanks.
Thank you. Ashby Durell?
Good morning. My name is Ashby Duval, and my husband and I own a business in Benita Springs, and we homeschool our four boys. We go to great lengths to give our children the best education, the best organic food, and yes, the best water. It's a difficult time to be a parent in regards to trying to protect your children from so many threats. I grew up in the ages of curly cords and phones and answering machines. My parents didn't have to worry about the danger of social media or internet porn. So while trying to monitor and limit access to things that endanger my boys, water is truly one thing I'd like to not have to worry about. Every time I give them a bath, and I watch that very dirty water go down—I mentioned I had four boys—I have to wonder how much of that fluoride was just absorbed in their skin. I can kindly decline the fluoride at the dental office, but I can't switch it on and off every time I turn on our faucet. Informed consent has become a very valuable term for me the last four years, and it's one I hope and pray my boys will have in the future. I want them to have the best possible foundation for their future with their IQ levels intact, without interference from the water, of all things. This neurotoxic waste product of fertilizer has already invaded a myriad of things, from processed foods to pharmaceuticals. And it's something that only about 50% of our body can even excrete, so it accumulates over time. In addition to mental cognition, health problems range from calcification of the pineal gland, which a 2001 study proved can lead to early onset puberty in children, thyroid problems, arthritis, bone density problems, reductive issues, just to name a few. Quite frankly, I'm already exhausted from all the lightsaber wars and ninja warrior courses I'm suggested to, subjected to with these little guys. So not having to fight for their health in this one area would be a huge relief and blessing to this tired mama. Like I said before, there's not an on-and-off switch for me, but there is with you and your vote. Thank you so much for letting us speak on this topic today, and I trust that you'll do the right thing for our children in our beautiful county. do the right thing for our children in our beautiful county.
Thank you. Truppa DeVal, Truppa DeVal, please. Thank you. Next would be Jacob Minor.
Hello, my name is Truppa DeVal, I'm a N O M A S U Val one. I'm an eighth-grade homeschool student, live in Bonita Springs. I'm here to argue the point that the fluoride in our water is taking the IQ down four points from children. And not to mention, we shouldn't have to spend our tax dollars on something we don't want in the water. If people are dead-set on putting fluoride in our water, they can go buy it themselves. And then we can use that money that goes towards fluoride into hurricanes and other pressing matters. And one last point I would like to make, and even if there were good properties in fluoride, the amount of consumption, consumption varies from person to person. I weigh a hundred and fifty pounds, and my brother weighs fifty. We both drink a cup of water, and he gets way more through his bloodstream than I do. In addition, fluoride also accumulates over time, and I have a long life to live, so the sooner we get fluoride out of the water, the better. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jacob Minor, please. Jacob Minor, I believe he's Coleen-Hagan, too.
Hello, my name is Jacob, for the record. I live in Lee County. I'm a thirteen-year-old boy that developed ADHD at a young age. We should remove fluoride from the water, not everybody wants to drink it. If you want to use fluoride, if you want to consume fluoride, there are many different ways, such as eating potatoes, raisins, using toothpaste, and you can get, you can get your fluoride tablets from the dentist. Baby foods are another food that has fluoride. In 2026, or twenty, twenty-six, a study by the MRC identified a number of health risks in fluoride, including babies. It breaks down their bones, leaving them weaker. There was a study done in the United States that had a higher number of community fluoridation also tended to have a higher number of ADHD diagnosis in children. You spend eighty thousand dollars a year putting fluoride in the water. You tell me, why should we consume fluoride that we don't want? I hope you, you vote to remove fluoride from the water. Have a good day. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Keller, and I'm a full-time resident of Lee County. Thank you for your time and consideration in hearing our opposition to fluoridating our municipal water supply. Ninety-five percent of the world does not fluoridate the water. Over the last six months, there has been three important shifts that have happened in regard to water fluoridation. Number one, National Toxicology Program report came out on August 21st, 2024. This was directed by the HHS. The NTP report that took six years to study the research on fluoride provided compelling evidence that higher fluoride exposure is associated with lower IQ levels in children, highlighting the profound and irreversible impact on our most vulnerable population. This is, you know, fluoridation in the water is, is brain damaging. Five to ten percent of IQ loss because of water fluoridation. Number two, a federal court ruling on September 24th, 2024. Judge Edward Chen of the US District Court determined that water fluoridation poses a unreasonable risk to human health, particularly for children and other vulnerable populations. EPA lost a seven-year federal court case. Experts from both sides, including the EPA, the CDC, the NIH, were all there and agreed fluoride was a neurotoxicant. The judge determined to remove the source of toxicity in people's lives. Number three, Florida Surgeon's General Directive on November 22nd, 2024. The Florida Department of Health issued a clear recommendation to terminate community water fluoridation due to potential public health risks. Dr. Ladapo described continued fluoridation as public health malpractice. The memo references studies linking fluoride exposure to reduced IQ, ADHD, neurobehavioral problems, sleep cycle disturbances, skeletal fluorosis, suppression of thyroid function. Fluoridating our water strips our right to choose what we put in our body. If we are to protect the public health, we must demand transparency, accountability, and respect for our fundamental right to informed consent. The water used on our crops, the water we use to cook with, the water we use to brush our teeth, it's a poisonous chemical, and I ask that you please remove it from our water supply today.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Daniel Becker. I've been a constituent of District Two for twenty-two years. I am number forty-three, titled Provide Direction to Discontinue Adding Fluoride to Lee County Utilities Drinking Water. Is obviously on the agenda because of a minority of people believing quack science. They are trying to convince you to take fluoride out of our water. The benefits of fluoride in drinking water are well documented. In developing this item for this meeting, missing from the list of reviewers are any healthcare providers. Why is this, since we have experts right here at Lee Health? What do pediatricians, cardiologists, and dentists think about removing fluoride from our drinking water? I hope the wording of the agenda item does not mean you have already decided to pass this item without that input. It is not a political issue, it is a public health issue, best addressed by those who actually know about it. I request you form a committee made up of healthcare providers, public health officials, the public, and utility to research this issue further before taking any action. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Joyce Campana, a Lee County resident of District Two. According to Lee County Utilities 2023 Water Quality Report, there are many chemicals scarier than fluoride in our water. Herbicides, pesticides, sodium, nitrate, copper, lead, lead which leads to developmentally issues in children. Why is fluoride being picked on now when it has many other worse enemies in the water? Item forty-three reads, "Provide direction to discontinue adding fluoride to LCU drinking water." From the wording of this item, it appears you have already made up your minds. Otherwise, you would have put down pros and cons to be discussed. Where's the input from healthcare providers at Lee Health or the Health Department? The rationale for this proposal seems to rely on what other counties have done, the Florida Surgeon General's opinion, and a right-wing group called Stand for Health Freedom, whose leader is an attorney. Groups that support fluoride in drinking water, which base their recommendations on multiple scientific research, not just two or three opinions, recommend including fluoride in the water. They are the Public Health Service, Centers for Disease Control, the American Dental Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Cleveland Clinic, and numerous cardiologists. If you watched the news last night, they interviewed a cardiologist, and this is National Heart Month Day, and you'd think you'd be concerned about removing fluoride and its direct relationship to the condition of your heart by, it reduces cavities, et cetera. The strengths of fluoride, strengthen tooth surface, making it more resistant to decay, reduces cavities in children and adults, resulting in fewer pain, fewer fillings and teeth pulled, and fewer missed days from work and school. Helps prevent dry mouth for elderly people and people on medications. Beneficial in preventing tooth decay for crowns and bridges and braces, some of which I have, and I'm very concerned as a senior citizen. Fluoridated water helps save thirty-two dollars a person a year by preventing cavities. In Lee County, this would translate to twenty-seven million per year. Twenty-five percent of the children in the country live under the poverty level and cannot afford dental care. Removing fluoride puts this population further at risk of poor health. If you care about children, you will reconsider this decision, and if you lower and remove this, will you lower utility rates or set aside funds to help low-income people with dental bills? So many questions and so few answers.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Deborah Polk. I've been a Lee County resident for four years. I come with the words of a very wise friend, Georgine Chase, a naturopathic dentist from Reno, Nevada. She headed up a network of dentists committed to dental health freedom, even for those who could not afford it. She states, "You don't fertilize the river, you fertilize the tree. You treat the teeth, not the water." Our pineal gland becomes encrusted with fluoride as the fluoride entomes it and it becomes dysfunctional, among other issues that happen in the body. It's time to follow the science and the wisdom coming with it and forever remove out of our water supply that which is poisoning us. As a child growing up in the sixties, I spent summer evenings, always at dinnertime, with the local DDT truck driving through our neighborhoods, spraying toxic poison straight into our yards, onto our patios, and over our play areas in order to kill mosquitoes. As kids, we would chase the truck on our bikes because we liked the smell. The time for that came to an end as the science revealed what was happening to our bodies. Not only was it killing mosquitoes, it was killing us. Community standards of health are desperately needing to be upgraded as we see the decline of our health for many reasons, including fluoride poisoning. I'm asking you to rise up in favor of clean water, free of fluoride, for the health of all our precious and beloved citizens of Lee County. Thank you, Commissioners, for following Collier County's lead and many others, and strongly considering and implementing this necessary change in Lee County.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jill Keely, and I proudly serve as the Associate Director of Local Advocacy for Stand for Health Freedom. I've been advocated for the removal of toxic fluoride since Collier County ended public fluoridation over a year ago. Florida is leading the way in eliminating fluoride from our water supply. Currently, it's now forty counties in Florida do not fluoridate. Since the Florida Surgeon General issued guidance in November, twelve more cities have rejected fluoride, and more communities are ending public fluoridation each week. Thankfully, we live in a state that values constitutional rights and personal freedoms. In Florida, individuals have the constitutional right to refuse medical treatment regardless of their health condition. This right to privacy is explicitly stated in Article One, Section Twenty-three of the Florida Constitution. Our state also provides vaccine exemptions, yet public fluoridation offers no option to opt out. Florida Statute 381.026 codifies the need for informed consent. Just as Governor DeSantis ended COVID-19 vaccine mandates, leaving the decision to the individual, we should do the same with fluoride. Some will argue that fluoride is not a drug, that is blatantly false according to the FDA. Fluoride, when used as a treatment or prevention of disease, dental disease, is a drug that is subject to FDA regulation. We cannot ignore the risks, nor can we justify fluoride, use simple, or use simply the excuse that it's been done for decades. New research has raised serious concerns. We cannot outsource our critical thinking to bureaucratic agencies that have repeatedly failed in their healthcare guidance over the past four years. At the heart of this debate is body sovereignty. Should our government engage in mass medication, deciding what is best for the public and administering it through the water? As Ronald Reagan warned, "The most terrifying words in the English language are, 'I'm from the government, and I'm here to help.'" Commissioners, I know you care deeply about your citizens and your oath to protect them. The research court ruling and state recommendations have been presented to you, the only responsible course of action is to end public fluoridation. Let's protect our babies, our children, and our pregnant mothers. Let's help prevent fluoride-related health issues such as brittle bones, hip fractures, and even Alzheimer's that come from the accumulation in our body. And downstream neighbors, like in Collier County, we care what runs downstream. And our coastal ecosystems are suffering. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Crystal Revate. First of all, I want to say thank you for having this on the agenda and for the two county commissioners I spoke with personally. Thank you for taking the time to speak with me outside of this setting. I had a speech prepared, however, I feel like the agenda wrote the speech for me, and a lot of the folks that spoke before me basically said what I wanted to say. There's a lot of debate on this topic, whether it's good for your teeth and so forth, but I can tell you from personal experience, my kids do not use fluoride toothpaste, I always reject fluoride treatment when I take them to the dentist. I do limit sugar as much as possible, as much as I can control, and I can tell you that they have no cavities. So I think there's a lot of other factors that go into the health of the teeth. I don't know why this is something that we would have to ingest just to make our teeth better, so to me, that is a mute point. But basically, I think because everybody said what I wanted to say, I'm just here as another member to encourage you to vote against it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for having me here today. I know you guys don't have an easy job, you know, you guys have a lot of things on your plate, and I just want to thank you for getting this on the agenda. With that being said, you know, I'm a father, it's my sole responsibility to protect my family. My two boys and my wife rely on me, and this is one thing I don't have control over. According to the Florida Constitution, you guys do have the control to vote on this today at any time. So as a father, I'm asking you guys for help today, because I cannot control the water that goes into my house and was put in that water, okay? My kids ingest it every day, they take baths every day. It's my, it's my responsibility to make sure their teeth don't get cavities, not the chemicals in the water. I think I do a good job of feeding them well. And when we, when we're presented with new information, I believe that everyone is, you know, afforded the chance to change their mind. I mean, at one point, we were smoking cigarettes in restaurants and on airplanes, and when we found out that it was deadly, we stopped. So we have new information today before us that's going to allow us to make a more informed decision. I think that the, the risk outweighed the benefits greatly in this matter, and I believe that as a, as a human being, as a Floridian, but more as a father, that I should be, you know, allotted the chance to determine what my kids ingest every day. And unfortunately, it's up to you guys, which I believe we have a good group of people in front of us here today, especially Cecil for getting this on the agenda. Even the person that came up to spoke for the utilities, they basically said that they, they have to do it, that they don't, they don't want to, basically, because it's an extra management cost. So that's all I have to say today, is just please help me, help me take back the control of what my kids ingest every day, especially the water, because they need it to survive. It's one of the three things, food, shelter, and water. And if that's being chemically dosed without my consent, and I don't know the dosage, I can't make an informed decision as a father. So I just ask you to please help me out, vote to take the fluoride out of the water, and that would be my choice, and as my protector of the family. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is William Minett, I'm a junior in high school, and I, as other humans, require water to live. My dependence on water makes this topic of paramount importance to every human, especially the youngest generation, where fluoride has been shown to have profound implications. My dad is a pharmacist, and two of my grandparents are doctors. More importantly, I grew up in a jurisdiction that did not have fluoride in its drinking water, and I stand before you today without any cavities. The up-to-date science of fluoride in drinking water shows the risk-to-benefit ratio is no longer favorable for human health. More importantly, there's a lack of human consent contrary to natural law, and as reflected in Florida Code 381.026, which states, "A patient has the right to refuse any treatment ex-" patient has the right to refuse any treatment except as otherwise provided by law." We are here today seeking to return the advantages to humans and call into question the idea of better living through chemistry. To support my point of view, please allow me to share recent conclusions from scientific papers casting serious doubt on the benefit of fluoride being present in our drinking water. Number one, lower IQ in children caused by fluoride. Source: A U.S. government study from 2024 and reported in The Guardian. Same conclusion was found in a 2012 Harvard study. Number two, nerve development concerns of fluoride. Source: 2011 EU study that proved that fluoride is not essential for human growth and development, hinting at potential risks without providing essential benefits. Another 2020 study published in a pediatric research found the same conclusion. Number three, fluoride can cause cancer. Source: IARC, study that showed a possible link with uterus cancer and bladder cancer. Another study by the National Toxicology Program found evidence for cancer-causing potential of fluoride. Number four, the 2024 Cochrane Review called into question the effectiveness of fluoride and concluded that benefits, if any, are less pronounced today due to widespread use of fluoride in other products. Other reviews have called into question the effectiveness of water fluoridation in reducing dental care, especially in light of other modern dental care practices. In conclusion, as an informed representative of my generation, I humbly request that this county's policy in fluoride be updated to not only follow natural justice and Florida law of informed consent, nor just the precedent set by other counties removing it from their water, but more importantly, because the science says it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Richard Schroeder?
Good morning. My name is Richard Schroeder. I'm a retired medical doctor currently residing in Collier County. And I ran across a recently published study done by the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences at the National Institutes of Health that combined the data of seventy-four studies from multiple countries, which I think might be of interest to you in making a decision regarding water fluoridation. It's called Fluoride Exposure in Children's IQ Scores: A Systematic Review and Meta-Analysis, and it was published January 6, 2025. Now, there are dozens of studies showing that fluoride in the drinking water, down to certain concentrations, causes decreased IQ in kids. These are called significant inverse associations. But what's unique about this collection of studies is that they selected studies where the level of fluoride in the urine of the kids was measured, which is a much more direct way of knowing what the children were actually getting, regardless of the source. And as we know, fluoride gets into our bodies just from a multitude of sources. So it's not so much important what the level of fluoride in the drinking water is. It's how much they drink, how much they get from other sources that determines how much people get. Anyway, what they found in these studies is that there was this inverse association of IQ and urinary fluoride levels, even down to the lowest levels they measured. The studies selected for this big meta-analysis were pretty tightly controlled for independent variables, too, which just means that other things that might affect the outcomes were sort of eliminated. So it was a pretty good study, in my opinion. And according to the National Research Council, many places already have levels of naturally occurring fluoride in drinking water that may be of concern for neurotoxic effects, even without adding the industrial byproduct, fluorosilic acid. To me, this is pretty strong evidence that adding fluoride to drinking water is pure folly at this time. I think the ninety-five percent of the world that doesn't fluoridate, their drinking water is getting it right, and I hope that Lee County will do the same. Thank you very much.
Yes. We have the speaker, I think, is here. Dr. Ladapo's there? Yes, there he is. Okay.
Come on up, Doctor, please. Thank you for your time coming here. It's an important matter, and you certainly have the floor as our State Surgeon General, so.
Hey, all right.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. And thank you for all the information you've provided in the last month or two on this issue. So thank you for all your staff.
No, you're welcome. Thank you all. Thank you for inviting me. Thank you for inviting me. And thank you all to your community for caring enough about your community to, you know, to take action. So thank you again for inviting me to be here. I'm happy to be supportive of any communities in Florida that are interested in making a change for good health. I'm an enormous advocate for good health. Yes, I served as the Surgeon General of Florida. Before this position, I was a professor at UCLA, and I took care of patients, hospitalized patients, but mostly did research. So I have, of course, a medical degree, but also a PhD because I happen to love research, and I've led multiple NIH-funded clinical trials in my career. So I have a good, solid amount of experience with research. But most of all, I love it. So as you know, when you really enjoy something, you tend to be better at it than you otherwise would be. So with this particular issue, it's always challenging when you have an issue that goes against conventional thinking. We have things that so many things we assume in our lives, and we take them at face value. And when something challenges that, it can be challenging. And that's, I think, probably the biggest challenge of this issue with fluoride. Obviously, there's some individuals who are very invested in the idea, and they may just be more attached to the idea. But I think for most of us who may not have known much about this issue in the past, it comes as an affront to our beliefs and our assumptions. And I'm not unique in that respect. So I think, as I'm sure people have covered during your meeting today, you know, probably six months ago or so, a federal judge issued a ruling that basically asked the FDA to take a regulatory action about fluoride, and specifically fluoridation. And that really caught my attention. It was actually an issue that my wife has raised for years, but I just hadn't really found time to delve into the scientific studies supporting it. But when this federal judge issued this ruling, I decided that I really needed to better understand the scientific literature here. And so I started doing that. I read primary papers. I read the judge's ruling. I read parts of the National Toxicology Program report that supported the judge's ruling. And I'll tell you that I was stunned. You know, I was stupefied. I was stupefied by the strength of the evidence that demonstrates clear neurotoxic effects associated with fluoridation, and just the absence, the muteness, of any discussion about this in the public health community. I literally, it was very jarring to my beliefs. But indeed, the scientific literature about this is very unequivocal. So I know that I overheard the gentleman before me already discussing some of it, but just to be very clear, there are multiple studies, many of them, that show in other countries where levels of fluoridation are higher, a very clear relationship. It's something that we call a dose-response relationship in science. It's one of the most compelling types of evidence that you can identify outside of a randomized clinical trial. And what a dose-response relationship is, is a relationship where the more something you're exposed to, the more powerful, the worse the effects. And the less of something, the less the effects. And that really is a strong evidence for what we like to call causality, which is to say that there's a tethered relationship between exposure and outcome. And that's exactly what you see with the neuropsychiatric effects. You see it with the IQ. You see it with things like attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. You see it with other behavioral issues. So that's very clear. The argument that people who want to continue fluoridating at this time often put forward is that, well, all of that evidence is from communities with higher levels of fluoride than what we use in this country. And that is no longer true. So there's a physician, there's a professor at University of Florida named Dr. Ashley Mallon, and she's actually published studies from populations in the United States, in Canada, areas where the levels of fluoridation are the same as what we do here. And those studies have found the exact same thing. So in other words, this dose-response relationship, which is not contested, not contested by anyone, that is present at higher levels of fluoride, is also present at lower levels of fluoride that we see in this country. So at this point, it's, I mean, I'm trying to think of a word that won't be taken the wrong way to describe the notion of continuing to support this. I mean, it's insane to continue to support this with the information that we have now. And, you know, and who suffers the most? Well, so far, it's children and pregnant women. Those are the most sensitive populations. That's where the strongest data are. And, you know, obviously, especially for our children, just why on earth would we, why on earth, why would we ever continue to expose them to something that's totally avoidable? And on the other side, you know, does fluoride have dental benefits? That's definitely been shown. But, and I don't want to undermine those. It's very, dental health is extremely important. You know, brushing your teeth, flossing. We in the Department of Health are actually taking some steps to increase the amount of dental education we have in this state. There are certainly populations that have less dental education, and there are large opportunities to improve dental health in those populations. But even on the benefit side, the Cochrane Review, I think just last year, published a new review that showed that before 1975, the benefits of fluoridation for dental health were more substantive. But all of the studies, when they reviewed the studies since 1975, there's very little effect. In fact, their report actually says that there may not be any benefit to water fluoridation. And those are their, like, that's, those are their words. So it's just, on the benefit side, it's shaky, especially with the wide access we have to fluoridated toothpaste and mouthwash at this point. And it's cheap, it's affordable. I mean, there's just, you know, that's not, you know, gasoline is a different story, but fluoridated toothpaste, that kind of thing, that's not something that people are having trouble paying for or housing down here in this beautiful seaside city of you guys. But on the benefit side, it's just, again, it's not, it's just, it's not strong anymore in terms of, like, whole-body fluoridation. And the risks just become clearer and clearer. It just doesn't make sense to keep doing this. And, you know, I'm grateful to your community members who've come forward to share their opinions with you. And again, thank you all for taking your leadership role in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Dr. Ladapo, thank you for your guidance, and thank you for your information today. And thank you for everything you're doing, and Governor DeSantis and your leadership in Tallahassee. So thank you, Board, for indulging the doctor, the extra time, because he traveled down here to address this this morning, this very important issue. And the information, I think, he's of pain, and everybody else over the last few years, gives us the background to make this decision, with I have in the committees, with different people across the community. And I've talked to people throughout the health sector, and I had really no pushback on this at all. So thank you for bringing this forward. And do you have, are there any more public speakers or not?
I don't have any more cards. Has anyone, anyone else that would like to speak raised a hand? But I've gone through the cards. I've been given.
Rachel Humes, the Vice President of the Lee County Republican Assembly, lifelong resident of Lee County. I wanted to respond to one of the claims that there's other toxic chemicals in our water, but those chemicals are not intentionally added to our water. The whole purpose of the Lee County Utilities is to remove toxic chemicals from our water and to get it down to a reasonable level that meets the requirements. Once you put fluoride in the water, it doesn't come out on its own. When you reclaim the water and treat it again, it's just adding more and more fluoride every time. And there are some counties that have, like, ten times the recommended dose in their water. It's in the foods we eat naturally. It's in groundwater naturally. So adding to it just, I mean, you don't know the effect that you could be causing by overdosing people in it. And as a former single mother of three children, I couldn't afford an RO system to remove fluoride from my water if I didn't want my children to be exposed to it. Today, I have an RO system that I use. But when I was a single mother with three children, my children had Medicaid, and Medicaid covers 100% of dental care for anyone in the poverty level. Everyone can get free dental care if they're in the poverty level, but they can't afford RO to remove fluoride. They can go to the dentist and get a free fluoride treatment. Head Start takes children to the dentist. There are dental clinics that offer low costs and free dental care to low-income people. So the people that are disproportionately affected by not having the ability to remove something from their water are the ones that some people are trying to defend. I think it's the exact opposite. The school water fountains, we can't regulate those when we send our children to school. They bring a water bottle, but they refill it at the water fountain every day. So even if you could give them unfluoridated water, they're not going to have it throughout the day for their school.
Any other public speakers? Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Cecil, thank you so much for your leadership. We appreciate it, bringing this to the agenda. I just want to highlight something that our LCU stated, that they have to wear protective gear, you know, in wards just to put this into our water. So that kind of tells me that we shouldn't rehab this. We should have had this conversation a long time ago. Thank you, Cecil.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I don't see anyone. I'll close it. Bring it back up to the desk.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to move this forward, and I'd like to have a second, have more discussion on this.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick, we, you know, I just wanted to take a moment to really, I know it was kind of hard to get him in here because he had a lot going on, but, Mr. Surgeon General, I see you're in a conversation, but, Mr. Surgeon General, if I may, I just wanted to offer our thanks so much for your leadership, not only on this issue, but, you know, we appreciate the leadership that you showed during the COVID pandemic as well. Here in Lee County, we think we were the largest county in the state of Florida to remain open, the largest county in the state of Florida to not have a mask mandate. We were the largest county in the Florida, we believe, to not even have a vaccine mandate. We followed your advice and DeSantis's leadership, and we thank you for that. You didn't get enough credit at the time, and you deserve it. So thank you very much for that. It's a privilege to second your motion, and I think, again, this comes down to the same thing we decided when we went through the COVID pandemic, that it's about personal choice and individual freedom.
I also agree. Appreciate both the motion and the second. Doctor, appreciate your time. Appreciate all your guidance through this process. Appreciate everyone coming here. I'm certainly in full support of the motion and the second one for... Anything else, gentlemen?
If I may.
Sure, absolutely.
So I'm grateful to live here in the free state of Florida as well. So thanks for all you do. And, but I say this is an easy thing for me to support, and protecting individual freedoms is something that's near and dear to all of us. And I think that one of the comments that was made that struck me that makes sense is fertilize the tree, not the river, right? We shouldn't impose chemicals on the masses over what we're trying to do at a single dental benefit argument. So you could have those choices to use your individual freedoms to solve the problems you actually want to do yourself. And I think it's important that we're, I'm proud that we're defending everybody's individual freedoms with this motion today. So thank you for bringing that forward. Commissioner Penner, your ass.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to make the last comment then. And obviously, this makes a lot of sense. A study done forty years ago. Obviously, things have changed, and we learn a lot more, and this just makes a lot of sense. So Cecil, thank you for bringing this to the board. Thank you.
I just wanted, Chairman, maybe your staff can talk about this. So this action is only going to disprove yours. This is only relate to Lee County Utility Services. So you still have a lot of cities and other districts out there. I'm not sure, like BESU, Beneath Springs Utilities, what other areas will not be affected by this. So this is where Lee County Utilities, Pam, could you address that? I know the city of Fumar has their own utilities. Cape Coral has their own.
Sanibel.
Sanibel. So this is only for Lee County, unincorporated.
That's right. We're only in the incorporated area for our customer service base. The municipalities have their own programs. We also have BESU, who provides water to Beneath Springs and parts of Estero. So if there is continued concern, please, you know, look directly to your water utility provider for guidance.
And hopefully, the other districts will look at this, what we're doing today, like we've done with other counties near us that have took action. Hopefully, they'll address that, too. So if, no matter where you live in Lee County, you would be under the same, you have the same quality of water. So, thank you.
One question real quick, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and Pam, maybe you're the best to answer this. So Florida Gulf Utilities Association, FGUA, do they inject the fluoride in the water there? in the water there?
I do not research. I think, um, I don't think that they put fluoride, Cape Coral's another, it's already, I don't think it's explored either. But yeah, I would, uh, it's probably best to check with your professional.
Okay. Yeah, just, we do have a board seat on the F G U A, and with Lee County's board seat, I just want to know, you know, we can even make it known as commissioners, that our position for the Lee County board seat on the F G U A when it comes to that drinking water utility that's in Lee High Acres, we would prefer that they not fluoridate too, as, as part of this motion.
Great, great, great discussion. I think there's clarity, and I think everyone needs to understand, this is for unincorporated Lee County. I hope the additional explanation, Commissioner Hammond, about, obviously, F G U A. But, you know, if you're in Cape Coral, you're in City of Sanibel, different places, you are going to have to talk to that jurisdiction. This is for unincorporated Lee County only. I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. I think we've had discussion. Anyone else like to talk? Seeing none, I'll close discussion. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now move on to walk-ons and carryovers. I don't see any. With that in mind, I'll go to Commissioner Items first, and then Commissioner Appointments second. So Commissioner Items?
None today, Mr. Chairman.
Let's wait a minute. During public comment, you'll, you'll be able to talk. Let's just wait a minute. No, let everyone leave. If, if we're able to take that discussion outside, please?
Thank you. They're going to stop in photograph time.
I know.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thanks so much. Commissioner Items, Commissioner Hammond?
I have none today, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Penney to address.
Yeah, I have one item. I'd like to talk about, you know, obviously, we're all concerned about pedestrian safety. We're always going to measure, take a measure, improvements for pedestrian safety. There's an opportunity here, we could follow some other cities and counties, what they're doing. Again, with traffic cameras within school zones. So the traffic cameras would be utilized in school zone. I think there's 14 in unincorporated Lee County. The city of Cape Coral has already tucked this up, where they're using cameras based upon amendments to the Florida statute last year, 316, 1895, to govern school zones for running video enforcement. So you're looking at 30, 45 minutes timeline where people are supposed to slow down 15 miles per hour during school zones. They do not slow down. Obviously, there's thousands of violators every day through that, and it was too much for law enforcement to physically observe. So I, I don't know if you all had conversations with others in the past about this, but I'd like to make a motion to direct D O T staff to pursue information of school zone enforcement in all eligible school zones with unincorporated Lee County by beginning 2025, 2026 school year to improve safety for students and drivers, and bring it back to the board for final approval, which we'll have more discussion then. Revenue surplus generated results of citations would be used to supplement D O T's budget for pedestrian-related improvements in around schools within unincorporated Lee County, like sidewalks and other signage, to, so any type of violation that might be used to go back and pay for sidewalks and improvements in those areas. That would be my motion.
I'll second that. Motion or second? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the commission.
I have a question for staff. Would, we've been talking about this for a long time. Now, would this be an actual ordinance change, where I know the other cities and counties have done this, it's actually ordinance in Cape Coral?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Under the specific legislation that allows for the program that you've raised, it would require the county to adopt an ordinance. So we would go through the ordinance adoption process.
And doing that, Board, we'll obviously be able to lay out and framework the parameters of this, how this would work, as far as, like, this only be doing, summertime, be no schools, it would not be activated, only be activated during school, activity, school zone, not on school days off, during that time period. And Rob's here, if anybody has any questions from D O T, how this would work, been meeting with staff, staff totally supports this, using this when the unincorporated areas, like the other cities and counties are doing throughout the state.
Question real quick. Do you, I think there are a couple different companies that are offering this service. I've been to the Florida Association of Counties Conference, and so they, they do have their representatives out there talking about how this service works to all the different counties. Would you foresee an open competitive procurement process, or did you have one particular in mind?
That would be, I guess, questions for staff or Rob, and I don't know, we've already been talking to some companies about this. I'm not sure where they are with the procurement process, so I'm not sure where they are with that.
Is, I don't know if it's working or not. Um, so we have already started discussing with procurement in anticipation of the vote today. So we will be working with procurement specifically to determine when and how we could present this. If we are required to bring it forward by the, the upcoming school year, it, it may be easier for us to piggyback with an existing contract with a different county that's already been established in the state. So we aren't opposed to putting it out for competitive procurement. I guess we would look for the Board for the direction that, that you would like for us to take on that.
Just one question to that end. Regarding the deadline for school year, is that, does that event trigger some safety protocol that would be different than being safe in the next month? Why would a school year, fiscal school year, make a difference?
There, there is no trigger or deadline. It's just, if we wanted to have it implemented before next school year, it's going to be easier for us to piggyback using an existing contract in, in the state somewhere else. If we wanted to go to competitive procurement, I do not believe we'll be able to have the devices implemented by this upcoming school year.
Okay. I, I'd like to be safer tomorrow. I just, I just wanted to know if that was a certain deadline, based on the statute that we referenced in the legislation, so.
Thank you, Rob.
I just want to say, I've never been a supporter of red light cameras doing like this, but I think based upon the safety of the children, it's a 30-minute to 45-minute time zone there, where people, I think everybody, every driver should obviously respect the law and follow the law. People are not paying attention. They're driving through school zones 15 miles per hour, and they're 15, with schools, with kids present. And it's obviously, hopefully, we've got people's attention, and they'll slow down through the school zones. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any comments? I have a motion on the floor, a second. I've closed public comment. Any other discussion? I've had a public comment, I've closed. Thank you. No other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Malacca, you have any Commissioner Items, not appointments?
Do not.
Commissioner Greenwell. I do, and I'm going to bring this up. It's, it's certainly the Duke Farms Stewardship District. You know, obviously, for a local bill to establish the Duke Farm Stewardship District, creates the charter and establishes the Stewardship District for over 1,134 acres in unincorporated Lee County. Legislative approval of this bill is not a land use approval. Just want to make sure we're clear on that. Lee County will make that decision on density, comprehensive planning, and all those future uses. If it does not have any comprehensive planning, zoning, or environmental changes whatsoever, will do that in another matter. This is a special district. The district, such as Duke Farms, are significant local, regional economic development engines. Annual surveys, most successful real estate projects in Florida includes several similar in our district, including Lakewood Ranch, Batcock Ranch, Walden Park, and Evermarita. One stewardship district on the property means less special district governments of a real estate project, and would otherwise utilize two to three community development over time. This reduces government on the property and generates long-term significant savings for land overs and residents. This will reduce the impacts on Lee County. We'll only need a statement of no objection, and we'll need to file multiple C D D petitions for county. Similar districts created by local bills have been successful, as I've indicated before, in so many other district, districts and jurisdictions. This district will finance and/or maintain the major infrastructure projects, and that's really what's essential for including transportation, utilities, and stormwater. I bring this up really as a matter of having, developing a district with complete transparency, for greater on the district, and complying with public records and sun sign, and actually having us be much more competitive. That's the reason why I brought it up. We do have a similar item, or, you know, that really has nothing to do with what I'm talking about today. That's on our zoning material for tomorrow, but that's a land use item, and I believe that's been continued. This is just supporting a local bill for this initiative. Our delegation took this up. So I just honestly wanted to bring it to you, everyone's attention.
So is your motion to send that letter of no objection then to the delegation?
Yes.
I'd second your motion.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Can I ask the county attorney a question? Is, is that letter of no objection required for the legislature to proceed with the local bill?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's not inquired, but as part of the public participation process, the delegation, I believe, would welcome this Board's input on the subject.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back up to the commission. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Any opposition? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Having done that, we'll go to committee appointments. Commissioner Hammond?
I have no appointments today.
Commissioner Malacca, any appointments?
I have one. I would like to reappoint Chad Chutst to the Coastal Advisory Council.
Second.
Second.
Motion on the floor, any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the desk. Any discussion? Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Greenwell?
Yes, Chairman, I have two new appointments. Zorika Volasevic to Lee High Acres Street Lighting Unit Committee. The second one, new appointment, is Jasmine Brown, Lee High Acres Street Lighting Unit Committee.
Second. Motion on the second on the floor. Any public comment on that? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back up to the desk. Any discussion? Seeing none, any opposition? That motion carries unanimously. I do have a couple of advisory reappointments, and one new appointment. I have two reappointments, the Gasparilla Island Municipal Service Benefit Unit, Frances Brennan, and Keith Richardson. And then in the Gat Island O and M, I have Sharon Paloma as my appointment.
Second.
Motion on the second, any public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll close the discussion. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That concludes Commissioner Appointments. County manager item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no items today.
Great. County attorney?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public matters of participation. I have Lori Hepner. Lori, are you here? Come on up. After that, I have Linda Shalimer. Give it to the clerk, show it value, make sure we receive it. Thank you.
Good morning, or afternoon, unless you're trying. I'm Lori Hepner with Animal Justice. And we have to get to the root cause of the pet problem. All these, because animal services may not be able to do their jobs. Hi, I'm, I'm Lori Hepner, and I'm with Animal Justice. I'm sorry, thank you. And we have to get to the root cause of the animal problem. Because animal services may not be able to do their jobs, and also, most of the upper management, and maybe an outside investigation into, this is needed, and it could be done in conjunction, okay, it can be done with the help of the commissioners. And also, I'd like to please change the ordinances to stop backyard breeding and ban all retail pet sales. Also, consider following SNIP's lead in Cali, Cali County of spaying and neutering, as their model is working great for Cali County, and has been very successful. And at the next meeting, I, we will expect a progress report on this, and for the, for the past meetings, as well as this meeting. And all, everything has been recorded, as the public deserves answers. Thank you for your time and attention, and God bless you. Thank you.
Linda Shalimer? Linda? Great. After that, Jerry Shirelli.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm, I'm really here just to kind of throw some reminders out for what some of our needs are in some ordinance changes. And also, most importantly, a lot of information and a lot of legislation has come up when it comes to retail pet sales banned throughout Florida. There's like over 80 municipalities that are now taking place and making, seriously looking into the benefit of having that. And there, a lot of them are being passed, and that would be necessary to also put in place along with the breeder registration. And the two combined could drastically, drastically reduce our homeless pet population, and also decrease the neglect and abuse that we see going on. And it really, I mean, really needs to be looked at. The animals, the backyard breeders are now creating new dogs. They're, they're, they're messing around with their genetics by breeding this with this, with that, and causing severe health problems. And most of them end up at our shelter, you know? They don't want them, they can't sell them. So between the combination of both of them, we really need somebody to please just look at the numbers, you know? We desperately need that. So if you guys could just do a little reading, pay attention, talk to Cecil about our ordinance 14, 1404 from years ago, and also, please look in the news to all the new counties that have stepped up. Quite a few are, and quite a few states have banned it throughout their whole state. Thank you.
Jerry Shirelli? Jerry, you here?
I'd like to ask that question.
Okay, thank you. Last part I have is Joyce Campana.
Good morning again. My name is Joyce Campana, resident of District Two. Today, I'm here to discuss citizen engagement and open government. I have heard commissioners express their desire for transparent government. At the end of every board agenda, there is an item called public presentation of matters by citizens, which, the rules, I understand, do not allow the commissioners' interaction with citizens, making it impossible to get any questions answered. I'm here to ask that during the board's workshop meetings, there is no, currently there's no provision for citizen input or discussion. This does not foster open conversation during the deliberation process. You need to allow discussion to take place during the deliberations, so that citizens can participate in the planning process of their county. Having to wait to raise an issue discussed at a workshop does not promote citizen engagement or open discourse. It loses the continuity and train of thought. For example, on February 12, there is a workshop on strategic planning and policy priorities. But the next scheduled board meeting is not until February 18. There's a six-day span between the workshop and having the ability to comment under public concerns, or the item for the workshop on the next board agenda. And in some instances, it's even longer than that. It can be three to four weeks. If, it is essential for open government that you allow citizens' participation at the workshops, while the issue is fresh in everybody's mind, including your mind. Participation would lead to better public outcomes and policy outcomes for the residents of Lee County. The change is required and necessary, especially with the upcoming budget workshops, which contain a lot of issues of concern to taxpayers. Last year, for example, at the workshops, you increased the pay for salaries from 5% to 6%. No public comment. It was like the, the decision was already made. When you came back to the council, to the board meetings, and I asked about it, no comment, because you can't comment during this section of the meeting. That is not participative open government. I ask you to reconsider the rules for your workshops, which should be a little more relaxed. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir. Come on up. Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Russ Arrington. I was here a couple weeks ago to talk about the Ten Mile Canal, and I know you are all listening to a whole bunch of people complaining about this is an are all listening to a whole bunch of people complaining about this and that, and thank you for your tolerance. But I dug into a little bit more research, and I guess there was an AIM report done in twenty twenty about the rainwater runoff during heavy rain events, and basically, with the increased development off Ripley, Lico, airport expansion, et cetera, all that extra rainwater that used to soak into the ground, which originally was cow pastures and just normal ground, is now buildings and roads and development, which, of course, Lee County is continuing to do. All this puts an additional pressure onto the Ten Mile Canal to evacuate this water during heavy rain events. And last time I was here, I was kind of steered towards Roland to get some answers as to what the county's plans are to address these issues. I've tried numerous times to reach him and get these answers, and I haven't been able to. So, I'm here again to ask if, what the county basically has planned to do to alleviate flooding of the lower Ten Mile Canal. There are thousands of residents that live off Island Park Road, and when that canal can't handle the influx of rainwater that's discharged into it, it basically results in flooding of Island Park Road and all the residents and communities south of there. So, that part of Ten Mile Canal is roughly about two miles from forty-one to Mullock Creek, and it is mostly limestone. So, a normal-type dredge, like what was used five years ago, with a, basically, a cutterhead dredge, removed any excess sand and sediment that was on top of the rock, but it didn't actually deepen the canal in the areas that the AIM report, and I believe the Johnson report suggests could solve this flooding problem. So, that is my request, is to get some answers and some information as to what the county has planned to alleviate the flooding. In my opinion, deepening the canal in that section would alleviate the problem. So, and, and the reports also suggest that that's a viable solution. The canal can't be widened, because there are houses on each side of it, but it could be deepened, and that would eliminate the flooding when the canal can't handle the capacity of the rainwater. Those are my questions. If maybe I could get some answers from Roland, or, or someone, that would, that would definitely help the communities that live off Island Park Road that have all these questions, to maybe get us kind of in step with what's being done.
I appreciate the comments. I know you've come here before. I'm certainly have staff talk to you right after the meeting, you know, and certainly have a discussion, so I appreciate your comments. You know, and, and thank you. I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you very much.
So, you know, let's understand, you know, what we try to do here, and there seems to be, you know, a desire always to try to listen to citizens. When you bring up different comments, and there's a group of people, we try to address that. Government is about democracy, okay? I'd love to tell you that when I run my private company, I, I do things the way I do here in government. I don't, okay? We try to be as transparent as we can. We try to deal with issues when they cross over many, many people. Government can't be all things to all people every time you have a desire or wish. I always tell people to communicate to the commissioners, whether you wanted to buy email, whether you want to do it with text, or you want to make an appointment. In eighteen years of doing this, I've never turned down an email, I've never turned down an appointment if you want to come see us. The three minutes are the opportunity, but the way we operate is to listen when there seems to be a, a group of people where something may be, we'll ask staff to interject. But we can't really govern every time someone comes up with one comment and stop the way we do business. That's just not democracy. That's the name we'll do. Just want to put that on the record for clarity. Any other issues before me?
I just want to say, because Dave, Dave is going to respond to the gentleman, and we're happy to get with you after the meeting, sir. You can come talk to any five of us now in the future. But this issue has been, we went over this issue years ago, and there is a answer to your questions, so I want to make sure he gets his answer.
Absolutely.
Dave, make sure somebody writes with him today and answers questions, you know?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
As far as public comment stuff, as far as the public meetings and stuff, I know this has came up before, as far as workshops and stuff. Richard, can you address that public comment issue with our workshops? The way we designed the workshops ten, eleven years ago, we have public input at these meetings, there's no action taken. I guess, Boy Joyce, for some reason, thinks we gave a pay raise to the Sheriff's Department that budget, because we talked about a four percent, five or six, six percent, whatever it was. She thinks that we approved that that day, there was no, but there was no vote. It was just a discussion, open discussion about giving a increase to the sheriff's budget. We were talking about all the constitutional that day, by the way, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's public comment before those public, those workshops here.
In keeping with Commissioner Pendigras's comments, there are multiple opportunities for the public to address the Board of County Commissioners. Your workshops are set up as workshops for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss topics of the day. It's a less formal setting than the, that take place in these chambers. We comply with Florida law in the respect that we, the board does not take any official action at its workshops. We then agenda any direction that might be given by the board to staff to be heard at your next agenda meeting, at which time, the board will typically take action, and it is during the conduct of that action item that the public participation is both invited, encouraged, and in compliance with Florida law.
Thank you, county attorney.
Thank you.
Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In response to the previous conversation regarding Abel Canal, I mean, Ten Mile Canal, we have agreed to go out, also with Commissioner Malacca, to go out into the community and have that discussion. As Commissioner Pendigras has stated, we have been out in the community member number of times to discuss these issues. I believe we've discussed the AIM engineering report, as well as other reports that we've had with the board and with the community, but we'll be more than happy, and we are working on doing that as well, as discussed at the last board meeting.
I appreciate it. We want to make sure we, we give it a direction. County attorney, I appreciate your explanation on workshops, and not only here, but when I was in Sanibel, the last eighteen years, that's been a protocol we followed on workshops as well. It does give the county commissioners an opportunity to speak in a little bit of a less formal environment, to brainstorm together, whether it's strategic planning or workshops. So, that's the reason that we do things. Just want to clarify some things for the comments. Any other actions before me, any other items we need to, I'll call for the gentleman. Everybody okay? Great. It's adjourned. Thank you.